Good idea.
Okay, I didn't last time and I had to reconstruct all that from memory.
You did a good job.
Yeah, yeah. Now I got the recording going. So this is a Plainfield Planning Commission on Monday, February 3rd, 2025, and we will start the meeting with a motion to approve the first minutes of the January 6 hearing. So I'll make the motion and Jesse, you want to second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any comments on the minutes?
No, they were good.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the January 20th meeting. And Jesse, if you can second that.
I'll second that.
And then any other comment? Any comments on those?
No, there are.
Okay, okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we approved the minutes and we can start the agenda, which really just has two items. The first, well, it's a bunch of items. As you know, we got the Select Board to approve the ballot item of the draft is submitted before any amendments. And we got, the Select Board kind of bypassed it, but I'll ask Carl to do the resolution. We suggested that they will adopt the minutes as soon as possible. They kind of moved over that, but they had a lot on their plate and they got a whole lot on their plate. So I didn't want to beat up on them at that point. They wanted to get that, the business going. And then we got a couple of other suggestions, one of which was, if you look at the map of the village district, it goes out the Rec Field Road and includes those properties along the river. Most of those properties are in the, most of the land in those properties is in the River Corridor Hazard Zone. But some of them are not. And we got the suggestion that that's probably not a good idea because the Rec Field Road is still under emergency repairs and it's pretty subject to damage. And while the wastewater doesn't go out there, if it did, it would be, it would be silly to have a lot of houses on a road that is under that level of risk. So I think we want to move that back to the.
Do you need a hand carrying something?
Oh, here we got somebody. Hi, oh, there's Paula.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was unmuted.
Okay, okay.
It's a little messy outside. I'm gonna mute myself now.
Okay, thanks. So just we should, I think that's the kind of change we should make. And it's the kind of change that it's good to have a public hearing to have somebody point that out. That that's not a good spot to try to even have the potential of a lot of houses. So we've got some public comment out there. Let's ask anyone who wants to comment on that amendment, which would be to move, I think it's just three properties from the village district back to rural residential along the Rec Field Road. And if we don't have any other comment, I'll make the motion to make that change. Jesse, you want to second it?
Yeah, I'll second that.
And without any discussion, we'll just, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll just note that to Brian Hughes at the Central Mount Ridge Planning Commission, who will enter it as a note on his database. I don't think we need to print out another map right now. But we'll note that change of the village district. And so that when we finally approve the map, we can print out, because there may be other changes. You know, we may, we may hear something between now and the vote about your changes to the map. So it costs a little bit to print the map out, but the map is a digitized version of all those GIS points. So if I just send him the email describing what we want to do, he'll have that in the file and then we can print out the file when we're all set. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, there are two other amendments and I think we want to decide, that's, we want to propose that to the Select Board. And there's two other changes to the draft that I'd like to see put in place. And one of them is when we talked about all the tenths of an acre, you know, sizing down to a tenth of an acre. At one point, we started to discuss making that, instead of a tenth of an acre, 5,000 square feet, a little bigger, but it's a little easier to manage in one way. What East Montpelier does, in their village, it's 5,000, 10,000 and 20,000 square feet versus, you know, quarter, half acre.
Because it's easier to calculate that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and then, and then we sort of went back and forth and decided a tenth of an acre was easier to comprehend rather than the 5,000 square feet. So in the draft, it's left as a tenth of an acre. But in some of the iterations, we had the lot size, the minimum lot size also described as 50 by 100 or 5,000 square feet. So there's a discrepancy in the text where the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, but the tenth of an acre is 4,300 and odd square feet. So technically, I talked to the regional planning guys and they said, or it was, it was Chris, it was Carl at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns that said, "Not too big a deal because the state statute says if there's a discrepancy in the zoning, the zoning administrator goes with the least restrictive number, which would be the 4,300 feet, which is a tenth of an acre." So technically, it's, it's the same. But in terms of aesthetics and confusion, we should change that either by taking out the minimum lot size. But that does describe a dimension, you know, that it can't be too small or too long, which is the reason you'd have the minimum lot dimensions. So we could just calculate those minimum lot size. I haven't done it, but it would be 4,300 square feet. I think that would be the, you know, maybe, you know, have a minimum width and a minimum depth that calculate out to a tenth of an acre. Make sense? Because if you leave it as a tenth of an acre with no.
How do we hone in on the right minimum sizes? Is that just?
I'd have to, we could divide a tenth of an acre by, you know, just so that instead of being 50 by 100, it's more like 45 by 90 would come out about right. So there's, if we left it at a tenth of an acre, you could have a very narrow lot that's very skinny or a very wide lot that's not very deep. And we want to have the dimensions so they're relatively.
You're saying, I'm, I'm, I think I get the gist of what you're saying, but when the minimum dimension came into play, why is it different for acres versus feet? I mean, you could still convert the tenth.
Well, because we described, we described the minimum lot size as 5,000 square foot in one place and 50 by 100 in another. And then we changed it to a tenth of an acre, which is 4,382 feet, which is different from, and 50 and 100 is bigger than that.
But are you saying we're adding language to give minimum dimensions?
Well, there already is the language of minimum dimensions of 50 by 100. So we should either get rid of those or say the minimum dimensions equal a tenth of an acre. And the reason we put in the minimum dimensions is to avoid very skinny, long lots, either in width or length.
Yeah.
So it's a mathematical problem that I forgot to calculate out, but it's something like 45 by 90.
We like to have problems as part of every planning commission meeting.
Absolutely. And, and technically, it doesn't matter because the zoning administrator can go with the least restrictive tenth of an acre when reviewing the application, but it would be nice to have it correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll work on that language. We have some time. I'll work on the dimensions. I'll also talk with a little bit of the Regional Planning Commission about what's the best way to present that. As, as an, you know, it could just be a minimum lot and the minimum width is not exactly 4,300 square feet, but something that's, you know, no narrower than 40 feet and no narrower than 100 feet. As long as it came out to a tenth of an acre. That, that's probably the way to do it. And how to word that, I think I'll get some advice on. So that's, that's one potential change. We have some members of the public and just want to invite any comment on that, on that change. If anybody wants to chime in. Okay, the other change that I found is long ago during the subdivision, when we were redoing the subdivision regulation, we put in a, a standard language that says you can't build on more than a 15% slope. And this evolved into a long discussion. And my point was that, yes, in general, you don't want to build on a 15% slope, but a lot of Montpelier is on a 15 or greater percent slope. They just are well engineered and we should have a waiver that says you shouldn't develop on more than a 15% slope without a licensed engineering plan. In other words, if you have good soils, if it's dry, and a licensed engineer says, yes, you can construct a structure on this property and it'll be fine, that's reasonable. Out. And I, but the Planning Commission at that point didn't put it in. It stuck with the blanket 15% slope. And I would like to put that exemption in for a licensed engineering design based on soil and structural stability. Because the person who didn't want to put that waiver in is now living in Montpelier on a house greater 15% slope and it's fine. And they've been there every, and the house is like 40 years old. And if you drive around Montpelier, there are a lot of houses on a greater than 15% slope. They're just, they're just built with the intention of being okay.
Right.
And I'll, so does that seem reasonable to you, Jesse? Okay, I thought so because you understand, you know, the building trades or. Paul has asked, yes, it's meant to keep big developments off the hill. But if you, on a broad brush stroke, but if you have some property and my property is almost like that, and if you were to present the whole slope, it would be greater than, it would be around 15%, but I'm on a little knoll and, you know, you can squeeze stuff in. If you just have the broad stroke of 15%, you know, you have, you can do it with proper care. So that's, that's the reason the licensed engineer, somebody who really knows what they're doing, can say this design worked. So you got a hand going up? You want to say something?
Yeah, I'm not gonna type it. So, you know, I think that the thing is, is that when you're looking at the 15%, the difference with Montpelier is you're, you're talking about urban, like a dense area. People, like you're talking about North Street and Ewing Street and up there by the St. Augustine Cemetery and even Murray Hill, like that's really steep, but it's in a city. Where, so, so if you blanket like, oh, 15%, we're gonna knock that down. You know, you could be building your McMansion on the side of Bald Hill now, like where it, it, it kind of opens that door.
A little bit, but you have to be able to do it in a reasonable structural way.
I know. I guess I, I, I know people who need to build like on slopes, so I get it, but I'm also like.
And if you look at, I, I don't have it up now, but 15% isn't crazy steep. You know, you, you could ride your bike up that road in your big gear and be okay.
Okay, so, so do you change the percentage or do you just knock it out?
I think in general, that's, it discourages building on hills because you have to, you can't just put a little, you know, put some building up there. I think, I think it'll work. I'll put it on sonotubes and, you know, I'll put my camp up there. I'll put my, park my RV on the thing. But you have to have a, you know, a licensed engineer do an evaluation. And if it's on good soil and it's, you know, you know, all those houses on North Street are built that way.
Like Will, you're making an argument for the, you know, structural soundness being the primary, you know, driver of that restriction. And Paula, you're kind of making the argument that there's an aesthetic component to it, which is that people historically have not wanted to see houses on steep slopes?
No, it's not aesthetic. It's, it's, it's about, I mean, if I'm a rich person and I want to build like on the side of Spruce Mountain and I can afford an engineer, then by God, I'm gonna do it, right? Like it's, it's, it's about sprawl. I'm more thinking about sprawl. Montpelier is dense, like if Plainfield was really hilly down, down, you know, in the center, we would have to have build, I mean, maybe we should because we could have building on, on the sides of, like on the side of Creamery Street and on the side of Main Street going up on the right.
Yeah.
Because that's in the village, but.
I guess to me, it's the, the density restrictions for each of the zones, for each of the, you know, different districts that would kind of limit sprawl to me. And if, if someone has, you know, two acres in rural residential and they want to put a house on it, then as long as it's, they've got the adequate lot size, to me, that's not an issue.
Or.
Thanks for that.
Paula, would it make sense to just keep it in, like, rather than the forest and ag, just make it limit to the rural residential and, and village districts? Where it wouldn't necessarily, I mean, just, it wouldn't encourage the sprawl, but it would encourage the higher density use near the village.
Not a bad idea. I was just gonna say, well, I'll leave it to you guys because you really know what you're talking about. But, but that's kind of a smart idea, but I will leave it to you guys. I just wanted to say, you know, to, I wanted you to take into consideration, yeah, like that just, the engineering thing just means that anybody with, with the funding can, can build anywhere. And I don't know, we're, we see that. All right, anyway.
Okay, well, interesting thought. Jesse, what do you think about just having it closer, have it as a, as a waiver closer to the village in those, in the rural residential and village district?
I mean, I guess I, I would be inclined to have it apply everywhere because, what is it, 10 acre lot requirements in the forestry, forest, five acres?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if someone owns five acres and the slope is steep and they want to build a house there, it seems to me that that should be okay, that we're not trying to limit development overall above and beyond the restrictions we already have.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't increase the density. So if you have the 10 acres, it's just a question of where you want to locate the house. I think one of the, one of the things Paul is mentioning is, and I think Waitsfield has it, and it's ridge line development, where Waitsfield limits where you can put your house in relationship to what they, what they have. What we don't have is view sheds and buildings in prominent locations. But we, we don't have those criteria.
Yeah, that was kind of, what I was hearing too, that that's an aesthetic consideration. They don't want that because they want to see hills that look natural. They don't want to have hills.
Yeah, that's one of them. And Waitsfield does do that, but we don't. I was just, I was just recurring, you know, looking at the possibility. And I was thinking more of the village and closer to the village than out of the hills. But once again, if you do it one place, do you need to do it? Should you do it everywhere? So I'm, I'm not sure who the iPhone 2 is. You did put something in the chat. Do you want to vocalize that for us or? Oh, Elizabeth now.
Yeah, hi. I'm just, you know, thinking about all of the landslides and subsidence that we've seen in the last three floods and encouraging people to build on slopes. Doesn't seem like a good idea because what can be a fairly moderate slope one year can be either gone the next year or, you know, causing a mudslide onto your neighbor below. So I, I would vote for just leaving it alone. I mean, I'm, I'm not voting, but I'm.
Yeah, it's a good point. And, and I guess my, my thinking was the engineerering would take that into consideration, but maybe that's a naive thought on my part, the engineer.
Well, I think, I'm pretty sure I know who you mean about move to Montpelier because I'm a friend of hers.
Yeah.
And, you know, she's had to, to put in all kinds of extensive drains at the back of her house to divert water off the hill. And she had to excavate to put in a garage that could be, you know, moderately flat. So, I mean, I'm sure she's happy. But there, there are disadvantages to hills and houses.
Yep, yep. Well, I guess it comes down to, would we trust the engineering? And maybe that's not all it's cracked up to be.
Well, I'm sure you could trust the engineering, but the engineer is only looking at what's happening right now this year when they're surveying the land. They're not able to foresee the future, I guess. And it also seems like it adds more complication to, to the work of whoever in the town has to oversee these things and adjudicate on them.
Yeah, you know, it's true. Karen's not here, but it would be similar. And, and another option would be to, to, well, I mean, we could, could put that as a conditional use and that would give it another layer of review. So it wouldn't all be on the zoning administrator. It's also putting more work on the, on the DRB. We could also just have it apply. Well, the way it's written now, it only applies in subdivision, not single lots, as I'm thinking of it.
Oh, so you have that for individual lots?
It is in the subdivision regulations and it was added to the subdivision regulations. And so.
A lot that was not part of the subdivision, you could build over 15% grade?
I think you could, but I better, I better, I better check that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I don't think it's state law, but maybe Paula has something to say. Paula?
No, not about laws, but I do want to say, you know, I don't think you're gonna get an engineer to, to take in, to take wildlife corridors into consideration. And when, when you're talking about this and you're going broad and, you know, it doesn't, it's in a way, it doesn't matter because it's like, well, if Marshfields doesn't care what kind of slope you build on, then why does it matter in Plainfield? Because we're kind of like the same place, you know what I mean? I don't know what their rules are.
I, I don't either.
Yeah. So in terms of wildlife corridor though, that, that's what I'm thinking of is like the further out you go and the higher up you go, the more you're cutting into wildlife corridor. And that is something, I don't know if it's like to the level of like the mandate, but at the regional plan level, it's there.
Okay, that's a good point. And I don't know the answer to that because I, I gotta be sure. No, well, does our 15% prohibition apply to single lots or just in the subdivision? So let's, and I'll ask, well, the thing is, I can ask the Regional Planning Commission how that works, get to more detail. So let's, let's not act on this tonight. We have, no, no, that's a good question because, you know, the wildlife need to move along that slope too.
Yeah, and the further out we build, the further up and out we build, the more we encroach on those corridors. And they're real, it's really problematic.
Okay, fair enough. I think, I think that's enough information to know we don't have enough information. Thank you. Okay, so we'll table that. I'll get some more information and we'll either do something with it or leave it as it is. So the other item that I had was how, what, what do we want to think about for outreach? To convince people that voting for the zoning revision is a good idea. And we have to convince them that the Select Board and the Planning Commission will follow through on the amendments. The one, the important one being conditional use of a tenth of an acre and the 30% limitation of a tenth of an acre in a subdivision application. And then the other ones we talked about, the adaptive use and a, and a couple of other ones. So we want to make sure that's a bargain that is fulfilled in a timely manner. And that the other items like the, certainly Goddard is a good idea. We should be able to convince people of that. The River Corridor is tough for some landowners, but kind of a necessity for the town to move forward. And I want to, I gotta talk to the, to the river, river specialist and understand a little bit more how that works and how to get information. I think a lot of the River Corridor we can get on the, on the Natural Resources website, but can we get it on our phones if we wanted to do site evaluations on our own? So I want to get some more information that we can disseminate that way. And then just, do we want to have a, I think we want to have at least one informational meeting that we publicize sometime in March, I mean, sometime in February, maybe our, our next meeting. Or maybe a separate meeting, pick a date, pick a place, maybe just do flyers, maybe do a GDR interview. You know, it's kind of, how do we want to, and, and try to, I mean, the, the, and we should talk a little bit about the NDA, but try to separate the zoning somewhat from the village expansion because they are linked, but they are not driving each other. Those, we were doing the zoning thing anyway. We're gonna do all these things anyway. It just so happened that they, they came together at the same time. And whatever passion and, and feelings about the village expansion program shouldn't be totally laid out on, on our per zoning revision. And, and the same way, the zoning revision shouldn't try to impact the village expansion project too much, although in the minds of most people, they're, they're tied together in some level because we're gonna deal with them in a very close timeline. You know, a floor, a town meeting and a ballot item on that day too.
So Will, what if, can we, within the Planning Commission, just draft an announcement in text form? That sort of, kind of like frames that, what you just said, and has some bullet point items that you listed about, you know, changes, cumulative changes to the zoning regulations that we could then post, you know, publicly on Front Porch Forum, it could be put on the Planning Commission webpage. Is that maybe a good way to let people really be able to kind of absorb that information outside of like a meeting where we're just kind of saying the things?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And if you go to the website, there is, if you go down from the draft and the map, there's a thing called the Planning Commission Report on the zoning. So take a, read that through and it explains basically the spiel I just gave with a, in a little more concise form. And take a look at that and see what we want to add to it. And we can make that a little more prominent. And I can, I don't have, I only have access to the calendar and the planning commission page, but if we get some, we can put it on the homepage.
Yeah.
And have, and have a little more fancy stuff on it, make it look good.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, and, and you know, maybe, I don't know if it makes sense to have a public meeting or not. It might be good to have a question and answer period where we, you know, the next meeting. Or, yeah, I guess we got a, a separate meeting, a question and answer, open, a, a public forum question and answer meeting for the zoning vote.
Don't you have to have a public hearing?
No, 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 we did, all that's done. We did our public, they did their public hearing. I think we, I, I, I don't know if we're required to have a public information, but. I think we I I I I don't know if we're required to have a public information, but I'll check on that. I I think we're we've done everything we needed to do, except for we'll need to do it all over again to get the amendments. But at that point, the the ballot will have been voted on. So we'll have to do the whole thing all over again or just. So, but you know, it'd be good to have a maybe a question and answer pe- that people can have a interaction with rather than just reading something on the website that they may or may not click on.
Yeah, why don't we um put that on the agenda for the next meeting on the seventeenth?
As a as a public informa- is also a public information, good idea. And you you do you feel comfortable that? And we'll put it on the website, Front Porch Forum, maybe put a link on Facebook and you think that's enough outreach? I think I we don't want to bombard people either. You know.
Those are those are the sources that I think of as being the places I go for town information and you know, there are forums where people can have some discussion too. So I think that makes sense as a primer for having, you know, a question and answer session in a meeting.
Okay, okay. I I I just want, I feel like we should try to do something. Alicia, you got a any comment?
Yeah, I think those are both I good ideas and I don't think they should be mutually exclusive. Um, as a matter of fact, the sooner you can get up and I I I think you gave a really great summary and I like Jesse's idea of capturing that. I'm drawing on my legislative advocacy days where although I thought a issue was very deep, sometimes it was you know, a life or death sort of determination uh in terms of the different outcome, but I knew the people had about one side of a page bullet uh point patience to read it if it wasn't an issue they were already really familiar with. And I just because there is attribution about how this and the expansion project are mixed because there I think there has been some concern about two of the issues that, at least two of the issues that were addressed in the amendments. I think it's a good idea to get just enough information and writing out to um give people talking points so that if you have a question and answer period, they can use it well because you know, you don't want, we don't want this voted down and to have to do it again.
You got that right. Absolutely. Okay, I think I I'm pretty comfortable with that. I can Jesse, take a look and Alicia, you can take a look. It's on the website as the planning mission report. Love some input, uh any suggestions? And then I'll uh I'll do that up and post it and I'll ask to have it posted on the main page. And uh I see another raised hand, John.
Ye- yes, sir. Hi, I uh hey, Will, I I wanted to say thank you. You guys are doing the yeoman's work. It um I've been there, done that. It's a um it's really tough to put this much blood, sweat and tears in your heart into it and then have it torn apart by people that don't have enough information. Um, I I think you you've done a fantastic job taking public input. I know you you you've taken mine. Um, and personally, I'm really happy with what you got going there. Uh, just just so you know.
Oh, thank you. Great, great. Well, it it does, you know, the more people they can show up and give their opinions, the better the document is.
Yeah.
So it's really the uh the uh it's the it's the public interest interest and 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 feedback that make it good. Because otherwise, we're just a couple guys, a couple people sitting in a room.
Well, I I can't say every committee running right now is taking outside input very well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. O- okay, um.
Wi- Will, could I just add one thing?
Sure, please.
I don't know, you know, how if you have a budget for informing people about stuff, but when I was volunteering in the summer and working with people affected by the floods, I was really surprised by how many people do not have computers, do not have smartphones, are not actually on Plainfield people. It really, it it shocked me. And, you know, I don't know what the alternatives are, maybe the Times August. I mean, obviously a mailing is too expensive, but.
Posters on the town, like public places.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's like we post the agendas at the post office and in front of the in the front door of Town Hall and usually at Positive Pie. Those always seem like the most prominent sort of physical posting boards in Plainfield.
Um, that sounds good, yeah.
In the co-op.
Right.
So we'll uh uh we'll just try to get that agenda out a little earlier and then word of mouth. Um, but yeah, there's a there's a there's a limitation to the accessibility toward digital the digital divide.
Right.
And and it's hard to, if you're on the digital side of the digital divide, it's very easy. If you're not, it's it is a little harder, but we, you know, we used to not have smartphones. We used to not have computers. We used to like, you know, print stuff out and hang it on the wall. Hard to believe, I know.
Thanks, anyway.
It also seemed like people got more of it then too, oddly.
Yep. Oh, well, we we certainly don't live in the world we used to live in. That's all I know. Okay, well, uh Jesse, if you look at that, I'll I'll mention it to Karen. I'll send that to her. And anybody who wants to look at that, it's on the the uh on the plane planning commission page. I think it's the third link hyperlink down from the the it's the draft, the map and then the report, which also went in the, that report also went in the town report, I think. Um, but uh maybe it just got mailed out to all the neighboring towns. It wa- it was a requirement um for the original notice of the zoning revision. But uh you email me with any thoughts and I'll try to put something together that we'll get it out. And then we may not get to the fifteen percent. Well, I'll I'll get, I'll see if I can get some more information on the fifteen percent, but we may not get to that. Uh before before uh our amendment period. But it's something I I I think we could still look at. Okay, uh any other comments? Uh, then I guess we can have a motion to adjourn.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, thanks again, everybody. And I don't know how long I'll keep sending all the members of the public invitations. I don't want to be a nudge. And, you know, keep bombarding you with stuff.
We love your invitations.
Yeah. Thank you.
It is easier when you get the invitation than it is to look it up. So you you might become uh ex uh uh honorary members of the planning commission if you're not careful.
I know, right? If you keep coming, you're in.
I really appreciate your communication, your transparency and your responsiveness when some when we have questions. I know I've emailed you personally and just the um the openness to public input uh demonstrated by this group, so.
Yeah, it's a public document.
For all your, thanks for all your great work.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
And enjoy the weather out there, you dog. It's raining slush here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye. Thanks, everybody.